Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We have a big crowd this evening. I'm going to call the February 3rd City Council meeting to order. Happy birthday to my husband. Councilmember Joe has an excused absence this evening, but he will be joining us later in the meeting. And as a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff members and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. And I'm going to turn it over now to City Administrator Bob Kowits to provide an update on our amended schedule for this evening's agenda due to the inclement weather.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. I'm happy to report that your city staff has been doing a fine job in dealing with some of the winter weather that we have. However, we are expecting more of that this evening. So, in order to be mindful of what otherwise was a long agenda, we're proposing to make a couple of changes with the agenda. Under regular business ID 1816, we would ask the council to take action on under regular business but without any formal presentation. Dan Hints, our urban forest manager, and Jeff Watling, our Parks Community Services Director, are here. And I know that Jeff just wanted to say one word prior to their departure this evening. So Jeff, here's your opportunity to say one word.
Wow, one word. Thank you to Dan Hints. That's it, I'm done. Just thank you for your consideration. After some great conversation with Services and Safety and Parks Committee, we're happy to bring this for you, for your consideration tonight. I just want to commend not only a first Urban Forest Management Plan, but our first Urban Forest Supervisor, Dan Hints, has just done an excellent job pulling this document together, great community outreach, great work with our partners. So, thank you for letting me share more than one word.
Thank you, Jeff.
And thank you, Dan. And we'll bring Dan back to pick up another item which we're asking to be removed from the agenda, ID 1816, informational update regarding windstorm financial recovery. What we'll come back and do is talk disasters with you probably at the next meeting. So we'll give an update on the bomb cyclone, we'll give an update on our plans for fire prevention and wildfire management this summer. Jerry Schneider, our emergency manager, will come and then also talk a little bit more broadly about trees. So, we'll bring all that back to a future meeting. So, Madam Mayor, we're then asking for the council to remove ID 1816 from the agenda.
And 8915.
And 8915 to be acted on without a presentation.
Acted on without a presentation. That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, council?
Can I just point out that I think on 8915, we had actually recommended that come back on consent. So we didn't see a lot of council discussion on that to begin with.
Is that the action for tonight?
No concern with that.
And we had just planned this larger presentation, which we're modifying this evening because of the weather.
Great. So then the action is just to direct it to come back on consent. Thank you, council member. So we will now move to the first item on our agenda this evening, which is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Under special business this evening, we do have a proclamation, ID 1806, the Black History Month proclamation. And I'd like to invite Onyx Fine Arts Collective Board members. I see Ernest, but I'm not sure if the other ladies are here. But if they are, please join me over here at the podium. Thanks for coming, Ernest. Whereas Black History Month originated in 1926, when famed activist, writer, and preeminent historian Carter G. Woodson influenced the American Historical Society to designate the second week of February as Negro History Week. Black History Month is now celebrated every February in recognition of the immense contributions of Black African-Americans and all people of African descent in the United States. And whereas Issaquah celebrates the significant scientific, technological, economic, political, and cultural contributions of Black African-Americans in the United States, and whereas each February Black History Month serves as both a celebration and a powerful reminder that Black history is American history, Black culture is American culture, and Black stories are essential to our continued journey towards a better society and to understanding ourselves and to growing stronger as a community. And whereas Issaquah acknowledges and rejects the long history of institutional and structural racism toward Black African-Americans in the U.S., and the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to confront racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals, not only during the month of February, but every month and every day of the year. Now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim February 2025 to be Black History Month. In the City of Issaquah, and urge all community members to join me in taking time to celebrate the contributions and achievements of Black African-Americans, honor the legacies of past generations, reflect upon the centuries of injustice, and confront those injustices that still impact our communities today. And I'd like to have Ernest from Onyx come and say a few words as well.
Wow, powerful words. I'm not a one-word guy. However, I think I'd like to just start by saying, the challenge that we face is still here. And some might say it's even stronger than it ever has been. I recall back during my, after I graduated from university in engineering, I had my first interview at Alcoa Aluminum, huge company. And the young man who was my escort for the day during a quiet moment as we were traversing from one organization to the next, he says, "I didn't know Blacks became engineers." And, you know, I got to thinking about that. I said, "You know, this man is not aware that Egypt was built using a plumb bob in So, and there are many, many other stories like that. So, transitioning on to Onyx, the organization that I'm president of, we saw the need to pursue closing the gap from heart to heart, from soul to soul, through art. Because art sees no color. You don't have to interpret it with a writing that can be changed many times. So we see it as a window to the soul, and because of that, we intend to cooperate with cities like yours to show that people are communicating. I looked at this beautiful piece on your back wall. You know, who did that? Well, you can look at it and say, "Well, perhaps a Native American did that." But there are many, many, many other instances where art is being used to just close that gap, cause communication. That's beautiful first, as opposed to, "Black guy did that? Let's turn away." So, that's why we do it. And we celebrate our 20th year this year. It's an all-volunteer nonprofit organization. We struggle like most nonprofits. We need money, could never get enough. So, you know, a little ad, so if anybody has deep pockets and want to help a brother out, please go ahead and do that. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I get a picture with you?
Oh, of course.
This is for you to take.
You tell me what you want me to do.
This is perfect. Oh, 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 come on. Come on. Can you introduce her as well and see if she'd like to say a few words? You just made it. Go ahead, Ernest, introduce her, and then we'll do a picture.
Annie is our secretary and one of our initial founders. So, you know, I admire Annie because Annie sees the significance of what we do, and I think she lives the farthest away from our location, our meeting space. About 30 miles, maybe?
Forty-two miles.
Forty-two miles. One way.
Yeah, like this is 42, two miles also.
And so...
And then in Bonnie Lake.
I really admire, you know, what Annie's giving us, and it's unbelievable. So Annie, you want to say a few words?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I really admire you too, because my artist brother and I are the inspiration for the start of Onyx. Because...
So, I've given them already a background, so it's probably not necessary to go through that kind of stuff again. We want to make some friends here.
Well, my brother artist, he's been a professional artist for like almost 30 years. And he had, 20 years ago, he had participation in two out-of-state exhibits. One of them is in Sacramento, California, called Sacramento City Arts Festival, Sacramento Convention Center, as an African-American fine art show in autumn of 2004. We were impressed with that. We didn't have a venue like that in Washington or the Northwest that we saw. And in winter 2005, he participated in the Baltimore, Maryland Baltimore Black Heritage Art Exposition. And they were like 10 years old in 2005. He was really impressed with that. And he was so impressed by the Sacramento and Baltimore African-American fine artists exhibits. Sacramento's was the first year, and Baltimore's Black Heritage Art Exposition was 10 years old in 2005. And I was with him at both exhibits in the out-of-state deals. And while we were still at the Baltimore, Maryland one, Robert said, "Annie, when we get home, let's soon invite several artists I know to meet with us and ask them to exhibit in an annual African-American art exhibit." We would start in a gallery in Pioneer Square, where Robert had a membership. And so we started with seven artists in the summer of 2005, and with our exhibit titled Northwest African-American Fine Art Show. And we had a 2006 exhibit there as well. We only had two years, because the people that owned that gallery divorced, and so it went away. Yeah. And Ernie and other artists, our first and second years, suggested that we get our own gallery and have several exhibits per year, and not just one, one annual. And Robert and I were so impressed and happy for expansion of a venue to exhibit art, do sales, and support professional growth of Northwest African-American artists. Because in 2005, there wasn't such a venue in Washington or the Northwest. So Ernie and other of our initial artists started Onyx Fine Arts Collective and Onyx Gallery, and we were so pleased with our 20 years of having this venue and having over 800 artists exhibiting with Onyx. And we're so happy having a second Black History Month celebration by art exhibits here in Issaquah. And Blakely Hall this year, Community Centers Art Gallery, with our title, Black Artists of Change. And my brother Robert designed the poster for that and the printed materials, too. And the first one was at Issaquah Community Centers, and many of you maybe already know that, at the 301 Rainier Boulevard South, and was titled, "The Art of Freedom," where our sister Donna Coleman works, and told them about Onyx, which helped invite Onyx to have an art exhibit. We were so happy with that. Yeah, so happy with that. So cool.
Thank you, I'm glad you could come in time to share all that information. And I would love to have a picture with you, too.
All right.
Ernest is shaking.
Slide over to...
Slide over a little. And that's quite a drive. If you want to stay for a while, hang around, that would be nice. I'll let you go in the middle.
I'm going to beat the snow.
There we go. You're going to beat it?
I'm going to beat it.
It snowed more in Bonnie Lake than here.
Oh, yeah.
I started getting here, it wasn't snowing.
Thank you, Wally. Thank you both for coming to my presentation here in Issaquah.
Are you Lindsey? Oh, you're the mayor? Oh, yeah, yeah!
I'll be at your show, for sure. Thank you very much.
Good, good.
Got to warm up a little bit. Well, thank you again, and I'm glad you will be presenting in Issaquah again this year. It was a beautiful show last year. This is a time at our meeting where we do audience comments, and members of the public can address the council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance will be called upon first, and if you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, raise your virtual hand. If you're in the room and you didn't sign up, I will ask for other speakers to speak before we close it out. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicated they desire to speak?
Yes.
Thank you. If you are making comments this evening, you are invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Issaquah's programs, projects, services, or events. Comments related to political campaigns are not permitted. Please direct comments to the whole council and not an individual. And while it's not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. If you are virtual when you're recognized, unmute your microphone. And if you're in this room, please step up to that podium in the center. There's a button on the console that will turn the microphone on. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently. And please limit your comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and do not respond after your name or your connection is lost, we are still going to have to continue with the meeting. Please rejoin if you can. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Public comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes these comments seriously. We thank you for taking the time to address us. So, City Clerk, who's the first person signed up this evening?
The first person signed up is with us virtually, Paul Quinn. Paul, I just made you a panelist. You should see the option to unmute and can choose to turn your video on.
Hello there. Thank you for letting me speak this evening, mayor and council members. My name's Paul Quinn, I live in Sammamish. I'm speaking to you as an individual who cares about fairness in how Issaquah's solid waste customers are charged for disposal. Right now, we charge our residents and businesses for disposal based on the size of the container being picked up. The effect of this message is to say we don't care about how much you put in or divert from the landfill. This approach is unfair, as it charges all people based on the size of the container rather than what's in the container. We know this is wrong, as our water, our gas, and electricity charges are based on what we use rather than on the size of the wires and pipes connecting us to the service. Handout number one shows a graphic of the trend of the monthly cost for garbage disposal for your single-family residences. It continues to go higher and higher.
Hang on one second. City Clerk, do we have some slides to show this evening? Okay, hang on one second while we pull the slides up.
Sure.
Thanks. Sure. Paul, is it okay if I put you on hold? We're not going to cut your time off while our city clerk works on that. I know there's another gentleman in the room that would like to do public comments as well. So that'll give her a few minutes to work out how to display your slides so you can finish off.
Sounds good.
Thanks for hanging with us. I know there is at least one gentleman in the room who would like to speak at audience comments. Yeah? Would you like to come up to the microphone and press the button in the center? There you go. Okay.
Hi, my name's Kyung Seok Khan. I live in the 1695 Pine View. I've been in residence in the City of Issaquah about 10 years. I finished college here in Washington State. I'm an American citizen. But I officially charged by the City of Issaquah first degree assault. I was in the airport and heading to the Cypress for my business trip. But I was handicapped about 15 minutes in from the public and in front of my wife. And the assaulting done is by the other party. The other party ethnic group, he's come from India or I don't know. He using very bad language. He driving forward to me with the car. That's a serious assault. It's first degree, second, I don't know. But what I mentioned about police department, it doesn't matter equally. Because the police department hear what other people say. What he say is lying. I can prove in the court. But what policeman doesn't want to hear my side of story? He was driving car forward to me, he lying to the factors. So now I talk to the mayor and City of Issaquah, please look at this one more fairness. If they hear the other side of story, they should hear my side of story too. So I don't have to be humiliated in front of my wife, handicapped. I've been here 30 years in America, I never get handicapped in front of anybody. I never assault anybody. But police department should be truly equally. I'm not saying that, I can prove I'm innocent in the court, but at least, police department look at the deasitized story too. So, thank you for my timing, and that's our stop right here. I love living in Issaquah and then good community, you know? Hopefully, hopefully, usually chief police officer attend here, that's I like to direct address to him. I can prove this one is wrong, but at least, police officer has to hear the my side of story too. So he should be charged. None of American driving car toward somebody, that's attempt to murder or kill somebody. He didn't, and the police department say that. But they didn't find that I touching or anything. I didn't even, no physical contact. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that tonight. City Clerk, how are we doing with that presentation?
Got it.
Awesome. Let's get that up, and then we can start again with Paul.
Shall I continue?
We will tell you when the slide deck is up, just so you can see what you're talking about. Okay, your slide deck is now, oh, hang on a second.
Okay.
It was up. There we go. Okay, your slide deck is up.
Okay, so the graphic in this handout, the second one on the right, shows the increase in monthly garbage costs. The actuals are in the dark and the projected are in the lighter squares. And essentially what it shows is a higher and higher cost of garbage charges, both that have been and that are coming. And what's worse than the trend line is that the city doesn't allow residences or businesses to reduce their costs for disposal by properly diverting materials for recycling and compost. In fact, unfairly increased cost to folks who work hard to sort recyclables and composting food scraps by charging them the very same as others who are indifferent, based on the size of the container. It's unfair, it's inherently wrong, and it can and it should be changed by weighing the refuse each customer creates. To begin this change, I recommend a pilot program called Smart Disposal, which will significantly improve the city's diversion rates. Handout number three shows how Smart Disposal works in some detail. And we won't go over that now, but it's there to read further. And basically what it says is that each disposal pickup will be weighed by the hauler at each single-family home. And the system uses postcards mailed to each resident, and that provides data specific to the resident, including a landfill diversion rate per pickup, and how the use of the utility compares to others in their community. And that's in the next slide down. The last of the, handout number four, shows an example of what that postcard could look like, would look like, and the information provided. And this system helps us move from a toss-and-forget mindset towards making better choices. And we all know that feedback through measurement works, because our water, electricity, and gas are all metered, and it helps us moderate our use. Smart Disposal provides the meters our disposal utility needs. So what I recommend to you today is that the city conduct a proof-of-concept study on the feasibility of Smart Disposal. I provided you, we don't need to look at it now, but I provided separately a proof-of-concept project plan that shows for about $50,000, the city can demonstrate that the contents of a residential container can be weighed with accuracy and efficiency with no extra work needed by the hauler's driver. Metering and reporting to residents what we dispose of at the curb provides fairness to help us abate the increase in cost of disposal. This council should support fair pricing for our disposal utility. Thank you very much for listening tonight.
Thank you, Paul. And you did share those slides in an email as well, correct?
Yes, I did.
Awesome. Thank you for that. I'm just checking around. I know we have a lot of people in the room this evening are here to interview for the, sort of interview, for the council vacancy. Is there anybody here, though, that is also here just to provide comments at this point in time? I'm not seeing any additional hands, so thank you for that. The council really appreciates when people come in and share their thoughts and ideas with them. You can write the council at any time at citycouncil@issaquawha.gov. What we did here tonight, we heard from a gentleman about solid waste operations and efficiencies, and a resident who had comments on interactions with the Issaquah Police Department. So thank you both for sharing with us tonight. The next item of business is the consent calendar, and I don't have any comments on tonight's consent calendar, but I wanted to see if any of the committee chairs do. There we go. Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In regards to the arts grants recommendation, I just wanted to state that the Services, Safety, and Parks Committee heard a presentation from Amy Dukes at our January 28th meeting. The committee thanked the Arts Commission and city staff for the hard work and dedication. Committee members acknowledged that making funding decisions is a difficult task. Arts events bring economic benefits to the community, and so we supported the staff's grant funding recommendations and recommended that it come back on consent as it is here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee chairs that want to report out tonight on any items? Not seeing anybody. And I just wanted to note, Councilmember Joe has joined us. Welcome. So the consent calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
Thank you. The pink sisters approved it. Did you guys plan that?
No.
Okay. It's startling, just let me tell you. It's very Valentine's. Okay, does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? I'm not seeing any indication. Is there a motion?
I moved to approve the consent calendar as distributed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Not seeing an indication. So approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries six... Are we short somebody tonight? Yes, of course, because we're doing a vacancy. That passes 6-0 unanimously for tonight, until you guys appoint somebody. That just caught me off guard totally. Under regular business, there was an ID 1816, which at the beginning of the meeting, we talked about. It's an informational update, windstorm financial recovery. There is a report, but we're asking not to have a presentation this evening due to the inclement weather. Also for AB 8915, the Urban Forestry Management Plan, we had Jeff's six words or more, where he thanked the staff for doing it. But rather than have a presentation, I wonder if there is... So the motion in here talks about approving. I thought you were putting it on consent. Councilmember Mertz?
We had suggested to go on consent, but it arrived here this evening.
Oh, but it came down on regular. I have it. Thank you very, very much. Okay, council president.
Yeah, I would like to move to approve Resolution Number 2025-03, adopting the Urban Forest Management Plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Mertz?
I'll just mention that we actually heard from the public on this issue, from several folks who are seeking appointments to the council, actually, as it happens, that were supportive of this plan. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Oh, there we go. Councilmember Hall?
Just real quick, in that I had a lot of nice things to say about the plan, but I won't now, just for expediency, since we're trying to get through it. So I think it's well put together and well done, staff. Thank you very much.
That's excellent. Thank you. Any other comments? The motion is to approve Resolution Number 2025-03, adopting the Urban Forest Management Plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously with a 6-0 vote. Now, for what everybody has been waiting for. AB 8952, City Council Position Number Six Vacancy. Council will be hearing presentations this evening. The City Council currently has a vacancy in Position Number Six. The council has 90 days to make an appointment to fill the vacancy. The city accepted applicants... The city accepted applications for the vacancy through January 25th. 12 individuals applied who met the residency and voter registration requirements. Tonight, we will be hearing a verbal presentation from each applicant. Everybody take a breath. Friendly, friendly room. The city council rules specify that each applicant will have up to 10 minutes to provide a verbal presentation. However, given other, well, not other, the inclement weather and the number of folks that are in the room, council leadership has recommended five to seven minutes per applicant. Is there any objection with the rest of council to limiting the verbal presentations to five to seven? I'm seeing head shakes. No. Great. And then following the presentations, the city councils anticipate to move into an executive session, which is a session in another space of the building that is not open to the public. There they will discuss the qualifications of the applicants. The city council may choose to narrow the applicants following that executive session discussion. And if they do that, they will do that back in this room after the executive session. Okay. So city clerk, who is the first of our 12 to speak this evening?
Landon Halverson.
And Landon, once you're up there, if you just want to leave that button on, we won't have to remind everybody else to turn it on too. Thanks. But, but you do have to push it once. Yes.
All righty. Now you guys can all hear me. It's a pleasure to see you all. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Landon Halverson. I'm a resident of Issaquah. I've lived here six years. I want to start by saying thank you, members of council for taking the time to hear all of our presentations tonight. Excuse me. Thank you Administrator Bob Kowitz. Thank you City Clerk Deizer for taking the time as well to ensure this meeting goes smoothly. And of course, thank you Mayor Polly for presiding over the meeting as you do. So like I mentioned, I've had the pleasure of living in Issaquah for the past six years, though I've spent most of my life growing up in different places around East King County. By day, I'm a regional account manager for a group called Lehigh. I manage seven states and our accounts in those seven western states overseeing account growth in the territory, both in new accounts as well as our existing accounts. Prior to working at Lehigh, I ran the marketing and accounting education program at Eastside Catholic High School, where I had the wonderful, wonderful opportunity to work with hundreds of fellow young people in teaching them the basics of business administration and professional communication. In addition, I currently serve as a member of the Economic Vitality Commission in the city. I've had that privilege since 2023. My service on that began about two years ago, but I really believe that kind of my foray into the economic vitality of the city started when I was in college and when I was looking for a way to support myself. And so I got a job at Stan's Barbecue during the pandemic and I worked there full time and I feel very fortunate to have had that opportunity, not just because it allowed me to get through school, but it gave me really valuable insight into what doing business is like in Issaquah and certainly what it was like doing business during the pandemic in Issaquah. So I'm thankful to have had that experience and then also being on the Economic Vitality Commission, seeing what it's like to do business on a macro level. So seeing business trends, macro trends, and working with our businesses on a larger scale to understand the bigger issues that all of them are facing. When I think about what I want to bring to city council, if I have the opportunity to serve and what I would want to accomplish, ultimately I look to the comprehensive plan as kind of a guiding star for what I would want to look towards when setting priorities. I share the plan stated commitments to mobility, accountable city leadership, socioeconomic vitality, environmental stewardship, all of the things that the comprehensive plan identifies. But I believe what would make my contributions unique to the city is the perspective that I would take on how we get there. I believe that I'm largely, like I mentioned, in alignment with the goals that the city has laid out for where it wants to go. But I do believe that I can offer a slightly different perspective on how to get there, assessing consistently whether or not we are truly using our public private partnerships to the fullest extent that they can be used, ensuring that we are looking inwards to our community, not trying to reinvent the wheel, but lifting up those in the community who are already doing the services and providing the things that our community needs. I will absolutely champion collaboration. I think it's very important that there is collaboration, not just amongst each other, but also with other governmental entities. So that includes other Issaquah entities like the school board, but also of course state entities and county entities. I believe that while they, these groups operate in different capacities and on different levels, their work can and should inform one another, something that I've thought about recently, just as an example of this, should, for example, the outcome of this bond with the Issaquah School District and whether or not we can build a fourth high school, should that inform our density discussions and our, our discussions about how we proceed with building? I believe it should. In order to have those conversations, we need to ensure that everybody's at the table. That's something that I think the council does a good job with currently that I would like to continue to do. More specifically, there are a few things that I would seek to accomplish on council if given the opportunity. On public transportation, the biggest thing, the two big things for our city that I believe we need to focus on is maintaining course for light rail and ensuring that we are being proactive and ensuring we can get light rail here as quickly as we can. And another personal project that I would like to see the city really firmly undertake that it has discussed for a long time is an additional crossing over I-90. This is something that I've mentioned in the, for the Economic Vitality Commission is something I want on our working agenda for this next year and I believe that it will, it will serve us well to continue the discussion on it. On local businesses, I would love to see an Issaquah jobs network similar to Snow Valley Jobs out in Snowquali. They've seen a lot of success in implementing that online program, which connects local businesses with people, with local people looking for jobs. So that's certainly something that I would like to explore if given the opportunity. Another thing, having worked with our DECA students as a DECA teacher myself, I absolutely believe that those students can be part of the solutions facing our business community, especially on things like marketing, which our business survey has indicated is one of the two biggest issues facing our businesses. I believe that our youth can be an important part of that solution, not just because they have the incredible talent, but also because it gives our kids purpose. And when I think about ways that the city can really help our youth during these, during these times, it's giving our kids purpose and by incorporating them into city government however we can, as the city has done, I think that it is good for them and it's ultimately good for us. On environmental stewardship, I want to see Issaquah remain a leader on, on decarbonization efforts and ensure that we are meeting our decarbonization goals. But I want to see us do it in a way that doesn't penalize our businesses and that doesn't force them out. I want to ensure that our ordinances and our policies are reasonable, but also ambitious. And I think that that's an important distinction that needs to be drawn, but certainly one that with conversation can be found. Finally, I'll just touch briefly on housing. I believe we have an obligation, not just to current residents, but also future residents of Issaquah when we discuss planning, to think about what do we want those who are young coming through our schools, for example, what kind of housing environment do we want to provide them? How are we going to ensure that they have a place to live in Issaquah? That being said, I also want to ensure that we're not putting overt strain on, on city resources and that we're actually able to effectively deliver on the things we promise. Ultimately, I just want to close and again, saying thank you all to taking the time, for taking the time to listen to our presentations. I believe that I can offer a unique perspective to council and I would look forward to the opportunity to work collaboratively, to offer new solutions, to offer new ideas and ultimately find new ways to bring our city together. Thank you all.
Thank you, Landon. I think we know which Super Bowl team you're going to be cheering for, based on your Kansas City Association. That is great. Thank you very much for that. Let me get back to my script and call up number two. Quinn LaRue. Welcome, Quinn.
It's great to be here. Thank you again for hearing all of our comments and it's just wonderful to be a part of this great community. My name's Quinn LaRue. I'm an Issaquah resident, husband, engineer, mountaineer, and a well qualified candidate, I believe, to join you on the city council. We have a great city that's in the midst of and vastly approaching more significant growth, with light rail making its way further east, in addition to projected population growth and other factors. There's a lot of decisions on the board now, as well as in the near future and in the, in the coming years and decades, to, to really shape the, the future and the growth of this city. We have a responsibility to our community to not only build and push forward and improve things, but also to maintain the essence of Issaquah. The small town charm of Front Street, the wonderful restaurants and shops and the amazing natural beauty and everything else that makes this not just a city on I-90, but home to many of us. Having grown up in a small Washington town, I love the feeling of community and camaraderie that exists in Issaquah. Despite population numbers increasing, as well as our proximity to larger cities in the area, Issaquah maintains a unique character that draws people in from around the region, whether for our fantastic productions such as just down the road at Village Theater, relaxing summer concerts on the green, or the great Sam Day Festival. People visit Issaquah to experience part of our culture and that's something worth supporting and preserving and doing all that we can to build that in the future. As a part of a local small business, I'm privileged to interact with many community members annually and see the joy of being out and about in Issaquah, just experiencing all that the city has to offer. I want to give back to the community that has blessed my family's lives and I firmly believe that my wide range of skills and background that I'll get into in a moment would enable me to be an excellent complement to the wonderful council that we have currently. I would be honored to join the council as a voice advocating for strategic city planning initiatives with the will of the people in mind. I think our current strategic plans are a great example of this, incorporating lots of public feedback and opportunities for public comment, as well as the skills of, of the knowledgeable professionals that we have on the planning teams and other city programs that are able to inform those decisions from a more complete and professional side in addition to the, the community comments. I think we can find the balance between history and progress and make sure that the things that we love can be appreciated for generations to come and don't hamper our progress. There's so much to be said and done. We have a, a lot of information in the, the strategic plans and all of the motions that are being processed currently and in the near future. But with time in mind, I want to, I want to go over a few things that I firmly believe in because I think knowing someone as a person will inform their decisions more than, than what I say my opinion on something today is. I believe in constructive disagreements, where facts are available, they should be accepted as such and used extensively in decision making, where they're not, or they don't tell the full story. Debate is healthy and encouraged with input from trusted experts and industry professionals, as well as the, the community and those who are stakeholders in the, in the decision in any way. I believe that understanding context pays dividends. I have a degree in applied physics, which summarily involves trying to mathematically define the world that we live in and how things interact. After working in physics and engineering for a time, I went back to school and I got a master's in business administration to understand and contribute more to the, the structure of the workplace and how the teams are built themselves and not just how the, the nuts and bolts of things get done, but, but building a team that can do that more efficiently, more effectively, meshing the technical aspects of engineering with the higher level strategy and leadership emphasized in the more business setting. Throughout this journey, I found that putting in effort to understand and thoroughly explain the why of a problem pays so many dividends. It increases the ability to bring people together, to achieve group cohesion, to build understanding and to, to just develop the, just the cohesion, right? Bring everyone together. If, if everyone understands why you're trying to do something, then there's much less arguing about the intricacies of how it gets done. And I think that broadly speaking, our community all wants similar things, right? We want the best for ourselves, for our kids, for our fellow community members. We want people to be treated well and for everyone to have the opportunities that they need to feel successful in life. I believe that decisive, but decisive, decisive, but not divisive decision making. I could have really gone with fewer words in that one. We have to make a lot of hard choices and we have to weigh a lot of sides of arguments, right? There's not always two sides, but there can be many different opposing views in different ways. And adequate effort should be spent in pursuit of acquiring the merits of each option as applicable, with quantified scope and an earnest intent towards timely and unequivocal decision making. At the end of the day, we do need to make decisions and we do need to move things forward. And as much fun as it is to debate things for an extended period of time, we need to make those decisions and we need to make them decisively, these words. I believe that mistakes happen, but progress is more important. We never get 100% of decisions right in any aspect of our lives, right? We have a, we have a council and we have experts and we have leaders and in many cases that leads us to do things that are good or great, maybe not necessarily perfect, but that's okay, because those things can change and improve down the road. I believe that we don't have, nor should we want to live in a winner takes all society. There's regularly mutually beneficial outcomes to any disagreement if all sides come together to discuss it and everyone comes to the table trying to understand what the end goals are, not just of the singular project or proposition, but where those projects are coming from. If the intent is truly to make the city better, to make the community better, then there is always a way for all sides to come out ahead in that. I believe that we're all on the same team and I believe that we can make Issaquah better It may not be the trendy thing right now to advocate strongly for balance rather than catchy slogans.
You can finish, Quinn. Don't worry. We just like to startle everybody once in a while.
That's good. I need that as my alarm in the morning. Anyway, there are solutions to all of these issues and to all of the problems facing our community and I believe that we have the opportunity, the ability and the imperative to work together to make it happen. I humbly request your consideration and look forward to meeting again. Thank you.
Thank you, Quinn. Next up, we have Jeff Newell. Come on up, Jeff.
Madam Mayor, council members, hardworking city of Issaquah staff and impressive fellow applicants. I'm Jeff Newell. One of my favorite things about Issaquah happened again tonight is when I drive up Front Street because it looks almost the same it did when I first drove up in my parents' backseat in 1980. And most of our neighbor cities cannot make that same claim and it's something to be really proud of. And I think it's been a little bit of luck and a lot of great planning and leadership that has gotten us to this position. Along with my wife Jennifer, who works for the Issaquah School District, we've raised our two daughters in Issaquah. I've coached youth teams here, hosted conventions here, worked here, commuted here, volunteered here, recreated and thrived here. I want to sustain all of what we love about Issaquah community. To do this, I bring my background in journalism and sales and army leadership to this council. A common thread throughout all those careers is the art of listening. Nothing is ever learned by talking. Only understanding through listening to many voices will lead to successful solutions and challenges to problems. By 27 years in the state's National Guard and Army Reserves, enhanced my ability to work with people from all different backgrounds and beliefs. And once an understanding was achieved, it was then about connecting the right people to move forward and executing a plan and a solution. Connecting people is what I've done for as long as I can remember. I love it. These connections have happened organically and through involvement in our great city, a city that guided, that is guided by a strategic plan that I know all of us have gotten to know even better the last couple of months. In getting to know it, I really feel that social and economic vitality resonates the most for me personally. I feel strongly that with social and economic vitality, the other five priorities from the plan are enabled. With property plan development equaled with open spaces and community, we can sustain and even advance what makes Issaquah so special and a place of pride. At the same time, we need to enable the economic vitality of our local small businesses that employ so many of our residents. Strong small businesses also provide steady revenue for our programs and allow people to live, work and play all in Issaquah. They deserve our support and just like the state under the new governor is doing, we too should look, take a look at the processes to identify things that can make it quicker and easier for small businesses to get up and running and then to operate their firms. Along with economic vitality, I believe there are several other key issues facing our city that I want to work on. First is the one that hits home to all of us, security. We need to maintain our incredible police department. I was so impressed last week at the State of the City breakfast, watching Chief Shuan's presentation. Almost all the key metrics showed impressive improvement the last couple of years. We had to make sure we support that and sustain it. We need to make sure where the community involved forces that now exist maintains that and that we find them more room for their operations. The other issues I want to lean into involve mobility. Who doesn't, right? I support and I agree, boy, do I ever, the need for another I-90 crossing and look forward to working with the community's input to find the most logical place for this. As someone that lives north of I-90 and crosses it almost daily, I think we can all agree that the that the crossing by the post office was a game-changer. Let's do that again. And while we're talking about improving mobility, I think we have a huge opportunity regarding sound transit light rail coming to Issaquah. We have a chance to get ahead of the curve, literally. Sorry, I had to do one dad joke. My daughter stayed up late to watch this from Syracuse University, so I wanted to make her cringe, and I think I probably just did. But I want us to get ahead of that, unlike some of, unlike other communities nearby that were much more reactive to sound transit and got told where the transit center's going to be, what sound transit wanted. We have the time and the ability to get ahead of that, be proactive, to be involved with those locations. They're going to be so crucial to maintaining our downtown area. All these initiatives that I just mentioned are much more successful with an involved community. It starts with the city sharing information often, which I think the city is doing a really good job of. The key is to continue to look for new ways to reach to those who either can't or choose not to go online, and let their citizens know of growing options. Maybe we should look at what some Amish is doing with their new newsletter. And having a council roadshow maybe during the summer with longer days and better weather would be a great way to get out of the community. Why not hold some of our meetings at Blackberry Park, or Talis, or Clark Elementary? But engagement is not just one way. Citizens should be queried often, like the community survey, on important issues. Online surveys, task forces, in-person forums can accomplish all this. Along with engagement, we also need to leverage support in Olympia. I think I can enhance our efforts there. In addition to having worked through the, there during a legislative session, I've maintained key relationships there, including a 35-year close friendship with our new governor. I say that not to boast, but simply as a promise to utilize that friendship if it will benefit our city. I've coached many kids' sports teams here. I was the YMCA expedition lead for Issaquah. I've hosted conventions at the Holiday Inn, and like many, boy do I miss the Holiday Inn. I have volunteered for Sunset Elementary School, the Issaquah Food Bank, Issaquah High School, and others. All these involve bringing good people together for a greater good, whether it was scoring more goals or raising funds. In the process, I've gotten to know so many citizens and leaders in our community. I've got close friendships with people from Providence Point to Squawk Mountain, Montreux to Greenwood Point, the Highlands to Old Town. While I appreciate their friendships, this is not about popularity. I value their thoughts and regular input, their questions and opinions on Issaquah issues. They're the ones that are living here, they're teaching here, they're working, they're running small businesses, or volunteering in our city. They're kind of like an impromptu task force that I interact with on a daily basis. And speaking of neighborhoods, I love how welcome ours made us when we first moved in at the turn of the century. South Lake some Amish is a special place, a community that was so happy to officially become part of Issaquah at the beginning of the century, and it deserves and hopes to have more of a voice on this council. This is going to be a really busy year, as you all know, with a lot of issues for this council. So the new council member must be ready to quickly step in, roll up their sleeves, and work well with the six of you. I'm that person, and I hope to serve this council in that capacity. Thank you for your consideration of my application.
Thanks, Jeff. Dad jokes always appreciated, thanks. Number four, Eric, come on up.
Good evening. My wife Anne and I live on Harrison Court Northeast. My thanks to Mayor Polly, Council President Walsh, Deputy Council President De Michelle, and all of our council members who took the time to meet with me during the last couple of weeks to discuss the current council vacancy. I'm grateful for the time you've given me today. While I was overseeing the development of the Swedish Issaquah Medical Center, my wife and I fell in love with our city's beauty and vitality. We built our forever home in the Highlands in 2013, and we've been fortunate to have all manner of services and amenities grow up around us over the past 12 years. Since retiring as a senior director at Providence Swedish, I've offered pro bono services, planning and design, for healthcare facilities in under-resourced countries, primarily in Africa. But I also wanted to find ways to give back locally, so I've helped the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank with their facility issues, so that it can continue to serve all of our region's residents during a time of burgeoning demand. That experience afforded me insights into some of the city's challenges articulated in our Issaquah strategic plan. I believe my skills and experience can help address those challenges, which is why I'm speaking with you here tonight. If appointed to the city council, I intend to run for election this fall, not as a stepping stone for my career, but because I want to serve Issaquah for longer than just a few months. Through my involvement with the IFCB, with the Swedish Medical Center Development, and other projects in Issaquah, I've had the opportunity to work with and gain assistance from the council, our mayor, and city staff, all of whom have been incredibly cooperative and collaborative. Our city truly has a great team that I would love to support as a council member. What do I bring to the table? In the broadest sense, my career has focused on transformational change, on identifying and implementing strategic solutions to complex challenges, in planning and design, in finance, program and project management, operational improvements, and nonprofit leadership. I've learned the value of careful analysis, of collaboration, of leading multidisciplinary teams, and of nurturing a sensitivity to the cultural, economic, and political factors in achieving successful outcomes. I believe these skills, with as a council member, enabled me to be both an advocate and a catalyst for Issaquah. I hold a bachelor's degree in fine art from Brown University, a master of architecture degree from Yale University, and an MBA from Yale. Over the subsequent decades, I've been in private practice, I've worked as a vice president and partner in a national healthcare consulting firm, and as a director for two major healthcare systems, spearheading the development of over $4 billion in healthcare projects. I've worked extensively within various regulatory environments and processes, with contracts, operational, and capital budgets, community and civic engagement, urban development, risk management, and really, all aspects of getting good things done, frequently despite seemingly insurmountable obstacles. That experience has taught me to keep listening and learning. Throughout my career, I've volunteered on behalf of my architectural colleagues, for high school students interested in related industry careers, for facility owners and managers, for the communities in which I've lived, and for those that are resource-challenged, for a regional credit union, a chamber of commerce, and currently our food and clothing bank, and an Issaquah-based group of amazing artists. Serving the city I love as a council member would be a natural development of these interests, and I believe a great fit. Now that I've had the opportunity to meet with each of you, I've heard two common and related threads of concern: the need to grow the city's revenues, and the need to build workforce housing. As council members, one of your biggest challenges is diversifying and expanding our housing base. As the 2023 Housing Report card shows, Issaquah is making progress toward implementing the eight strategies in the 2017 Housing Strategy Work Plan. Through your efforts, the city established an inclusive housing investment pool, identified the need for pioneer projects in central Issaquah, and transit-oriented development. You are striving toward meeting the mandates of HB 1337 and HB 1110, working through the nuances of inclusionary zoning, tax exemptions, expediting regulatory approvals and development agreements, and evaluating the potential impacts of alternatives like cohousing, ADUs, and, excuse me, middle housing. Your efforts have shown that it will take a multifaceted approach, informed by what has worked elsewhere, to achieve our housing goals. It will also require real estate developers to step up, by repurposing underutilized parking lots and other low-revenue-producing properties in central Issaquah, by using efficient construction methods like modular assemblies, and simple designs with readily-available upcycled, sorry, and bio-based materials, and by partnering with community organizations and local lenders to develop lower-cost funding mechanisms. Taken together, similar efforts have been shown to reduce construction costs by 10% to 15%. Increasing financial viability of greater housing diversity inevitably results in a more livable and affordable Issaquah, and it can incentivize businesses to locate in Issaquah, where their employees can afford to both live and work, with the added benefit of an increased tax base that can help our revenue shortfalls. I'm not telling you anything you don't already know. Solving difficult problems usually requires complex solutions. As a council member, I would expect to learn much more about what are practical and implementable solutions for Issaquah, but I would also bring the insights I've gained over more than 30 years in real estate development. I hope that you will give me serious consideration for my interest in serving as an Issaquah city council member. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Eric. You didn't get the big beep, but I think you were close. Number five, is Tina here this evening? Come on up, Tina.
Good evening, Mayor Polly, council members, city clerk, administrator, and community members. I am so excited to get a chance to present to you today and share a little bit about my vision for Issaquah. Like you said, my name is Tina, Tina Hayes. I live on Bus Street, and I'd like to share my perspective for growing a fair, equitable, and diverse housing environment in Issaquah, and how continued investment in community programs focused on mental health can enrich and empower our neighbors to do the best work for themselves and for the town that we live in. So let's start with housing affordability and availability. My family moved to Issaquah almost six years ago, first to the Highlands, then down the hill. We quickly fell in love with this town's character, the beautiful outdoor scenery, the walkability, the historic areas. In Old Town, where the neighborhood we live, we have lots of lovely old homes, big lots, and trees. Some of my neighbors are undergoing some pretty major renovations. Some have moved due to rising property taxes. Others worry that denser housing will change the town's character and invite crime. I'm the kind of neighbor who supports more apartments and mixed-use buildings, yes, in my backyard, because I think we can find ways to preserve what makes Issaquah special, while also embracing growth and equity. Incentivizing a diversity of housing solutions makes our town stronger. Every neighbor deserves to be heard, and when I talk with folks at our neighborhood picnic, I can see that there are people missing from this conversation. We've got middle-income professionals, young adults, young families, immigrants that are eager to join our community, neighbors who need options beyond a million-dollar, single-family home. So I thought, I think that thoughtful land use policies, especially on the valley floor, can expand housing without sacrificing Issaquah's natural and historic beauty. The Central Issaquah Pioneer Program and efforts to streamline permitting are wonderful steps in the right direction. So I understand that change can bring about strong feelings. I have had a lot of practice listening to folks who are heated up about an issue, and while I will be guided by my core values, that equitable housing is the foundation of a vibrant city, I promise to listen to all citizens who care about this issue, which I hope would be everyone. Moving on to human services, I've been a therapist for 16 years, mom for 12, wife for 14, daughter for 40. My kids will tell you, I talk a lot about shared responsibility. The vision laid out in the 2022 Human Service Strategic Plan, that meeting the basic needs, meeting basic human needs as a shared responsibility, isn't just a moral imperative, it's a practical one. Taking collective action, spending money to address challenges that one could argue are not my problem, is work that should matter to all of us because of our fundamental interconnectedness. When you are better, so am I. When I get care and support before I hit rock bottom, or housing that I can afford, I will thrive and contribute more back, and I can access resources in a different way than if I were to go into a cycle of crisis. On the service side of things, we know that crisis work is time-consuming and expensive, which is why I believe we must protect and grow our city's human services, mental and behavioral health, and services that connect residents upstream of crisis. The city has already taken important steps, like expanding its human services to include behavioral health and homeless outreach, and supporting nonprofits like The Garage. I want more of this. I want to contribute to policy work that builds on these efforts, and to develop new partnerships through work on regional boards and commissions. People often engage human services at points of significant hardship. I saw this a lot in my work at Friends of Youth. I've worked with families who have faced eviction or are facing eviction, parents struggling to help teens who self-harm, kids and students refusing to return to school. Often, as a provider who is downstream in a system, I feel frustrated and isolated, because it always feels like there could have been or should have been more that was done. And I think I continue to be anchored in principles of shared responsibility, and understand that human service work is a vast continuum, a stream of possibility. So what sets me apart as a candidate is my capacity for deep listening, my skills synthesizing disparate viewpoints. I can navigate complexity, way-diverse perspectives, and resist oversimplified solutions. Every decision involves trade-offs, of course, and I'm committed to making data-driven, equity-focused choices that reflect our community's needs. Like all of you and all the folks in this room, I want to see Issaquah continue to thrive, and I would be honored to bring my experience, perspective, and dedication to the city council. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Tina. Next up, we have Chris Richley.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members, staff, and community members. For those of you who don't know me, please allow me to introduce myself. My name is Chris Richley. Before I talk about why I'm the best person for this appointment, I'd like to first start by thanking my wife Amy, and my youngest daughter Madison for both being present tonight, and my oldest daughter Megan, who's attending college in Arizona, watching virtually, and to my extended family and friends who are also watching virtually, who cannot be here tonight due to the inclement weather. With limited time, or without your support, I would not be here without their support. With the limited time, I'm going to take my wife's recommendation of the three Bs: be brief, be brilliant, and be gone. And it works tonight, right? Having lived in Issaquah for the past 10 years now, and being the community branch manager of Harborstone Credit Union for the past five, I've seen and experienced the value of making an impact in my community by making connections with people, growing and building relationships, and getting involved to make a difference in the community not only do I live in, I work in, but I engage in. And tonight, I'm going to share with you three items: how I live, how I work, and how I engage, along with my why. So that's four, I guess, right? I'm not going to be too brief, but we're going to get there. First, how I live. Having grown up in a small business family, I learned really quick the value of customer service, doing things right for the people, doing things right for your customers to continue to have them come back. I was also seeing the, what it was like to live check-to-check, the importance of actually having a cash flow in the business cycle. Customer service is something that I've been in for 30 years now, a long time. Although I do not have a college education, I like to say I have an education in people skills, with a minor in banking, and also small business. I like to think that that's what's grown, my passion to do what's best for the city. Having worked for the last five years in Issaquah, my passion to take the next step, and just to learn, I get to talk to people every day about their needs, ask them questions, just to see what their overall, you know, everyday life is. I get to see people from our local teachers, our community members, fire department, police department, city council members, come through my doors every day at my branch. And I have the privilege of asking them questions about their financial decisions, their personal life, and I got to hear a lot of the concerns in the community that really resonated to me by living here. And so I figured, what could I do next? So I reached out to some of the local, I reached out to Mayor Polly, I reached out to Jen Davis Hayes, and I asked them, and I shared with them my vision, of helping small businesses, helping my community, helping make business easier to do in Issaquah, also allowing our community to live, work, and engage like I do. So then I joined the Chamber of Commerce as the Economic Development Committee. We saw initiatives- We saw initiatives around how to help small businesses communicate around their way of advertising, along with just being present in the community, along with how to drive business organically by connections through the community and together. I then joined the Economic Vitality Commission, which I've served on now, going on five years, as an alternate. Six months into the Economic Vitality Commission, I became the co-chair. Six months, about three months after that, I became the chair. I've been the chair ever since. I have the privilege of leading 12 other additional commissioners currently, right now, helping initiatives such as the current Sign Code that we've had, Title 18 Plan, the Comprehensive Plan, the Strategic Plan, and the newly developed Economic Development Plan. Part of the Economic Development Plan had three initiatives: outdoor recreation, home-source business, and arts and culture. We want to focus on those because we want to be, as Issaquah to be known, as more of a business-friendly environment, and only that, it one of that welcomes community. For the past four years, I've developed and maintained relationships with city council, developers, residents, and business community members. Another appointment I got was to be appointed by Mayor Polly as the co-chair of the Strategic Plans Task Force of the city, working on the initiatives that we see today and that got adopted back in December. I got to collaborate and work together, side by side, with fellow council members, community members that are here tonight, and other community residents about a vision that we hold tight today in the, as a council. Those are our guiding posts. The Comprehensive Plan falls under that, or over that, and the Strategic Plan is what we, as a council, strive to do every day. A small-town atmosphere with my, with big city amenities, excellent schools, beautiful parks, safety, diverse neighborhoods, easy access to surrounding cities, and natural outdoor beauty are the reasons why my wife and I chose to live in Issaquah. I want to ensure that Issaquah continues to be a city to raise a family, residents feel safe, supports local business, and continues to grow and thrive. My strong customer service experience will significantly contribute to council by fostering community loyalty, increase positive word of mouth, boosting and supporting community needs, and ultimately driving an overall growth of the city, making the community feel valued and heard. People want to be heard. It's not about my agenda. We're supposed to...
Take your time and wrap up, Chris. Thanks.
All right. So with my 25 years of experience in banking and financial sector, will continue to counsel, will contribute to counsel because I'm able to break down bridges or break down budgets, financial statements, ask the questions to gain better understanding of how money is spent or saved, and ultimately help council show value of the community when it comes to ensuring the money is supporting the needs of the city and in the future. Thank you for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Chris. We are going to welcome up Mary Newcomer-Williams. Come on up.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you in support of my application for City Council Position Six. My name is Mary Newcomer-Williams, and I have lived with my family in the Talis neighborhood here in Issaquah since 2006. My husband Fred and I and our two children, then ages six and three, moved here from Washington, D.C., so I could take a job at Microsoft, where I continue to work as an Assistant General Counsel, supporting engineering teams in the responsible and compliant development of AI technology. I'd like to speak to you tonight about why I'm interested in serving in this position, what I hope to accomplish in the role, and how I would contribute as a member of the council. First, why am I here? I believe in the power of community, that community is the foundation of a meaningful and fulfilling life. My family's life has been deeply enriched by the relationships, amenities, and experiences in this Issaquah community: great public schools, village theater, the farmer's market, hiking on Cougar Mountain, swim team at Julius Bohm Pool, karate classes and father-daughter dances at the community center, summer camp at the salmon hatchery. I'm sure you all have your own long lists of examples. We continue to enjoy the benefits of our Issaquah community, but as my children now approach adulthood, I find myself wanting to do more to help sustain and grow this community for the next generations. I also have a longtime interest in policy and good government, dating back to a college degree in political science and legal studies that were motivated by my interest in the intersection between government and business and community. That interest has been reinforced in recent years as I have become involved in local democratic politics and developed relationships with our local, state, and federal representatives. So what do I hope to accomplish as a member of the council? And what are the principles that would guide my policy decisions? When I envision a vibrant and flourishing community for Issaquah, I see a thriving economy and diverse arts and culture that are enjoyed by all our residents and visitors with safe and inviting natural and public spaces that bring the community together. Achieving this vision requires thoughtful and pragmatic balancing of interests that recognize the reality and the economic benefits of growth in our region while acknowledging and addressing the challenges of meeting the needs of a growing population and protecting the vulnerable: animals, ecosystems, green spaces, and vulnerable populations, which can include schoolchildren and senior citizens, those struggling with mental health issues or housing instability, or those new to the community who may speak a language other than English. In the context of specific issues important to Issaquah today, that pragmatic balancing of interest looks like continuing to pursue a strategy of building out commercial and residential density as walkable as possible in the valley while preserving green spaces in the hillsides, supporting public safety through both adequate, community-oriented policing and evidence-based crime prevention measures, improving mobility through transportation solutions that serve the entire community and are transit, cycle, and pedestrian-friendly, and supporting a range of options to increase affordable housing, including multifamily middle housing. I grew up in a part of New England where double and triple-decker housing, they called it, was widespread, and I saw firsthand what a good option they could be for families and community and how the availability of rental income can pave the way for homeownership. So I see that as a real option. These are just a few examples of how my values and principles would guide my policy decision-making on the council. In all cases, I would seek to proactively solicit input from community members who would be impacted by policy decisions but might not otherwise be heard. Finally, how would I contribute unique skills and qualifications as a member of the council? Of course, my nearly 30-year legal career prepares me well to read and write city ordinances. I have been interpreting and advising on laws and regulations for my entire career, and this has given me a good understanding of how the sections of a code work together and how to write legislative language to avoid ambiguity and misinterpretation. Perhaps more importantly, I am an innate systems thinker who approaches issues and problems from a holistic perspective. I synthesize the facts to develop a broad understanding of the issue, I identify relevant stakeholders and solicit their input, and I anticipate and account for downstream and unintended consequences. I have employed this thinking in my career for decades to facilitate informed decision-making in very complex circumstances. This should also serve me well as a council member considering and adopting policies to advance the city's strategic plan and its interconnected goals and initiatives. In addition, my professional and volunteer leadership experience has prepared me to work well as part of a team. I help to ensure all perspectives are heard, that the team thinks creatively without losing focus on its objectives, and that a fair process is followed to make principled decisions with confidence and empathy. Lastly, my familiarity with emerging AI technology, and especially with frameworks and techniques for using that technology responsibly and ethically, will be useful as the city very likely considers options which may require new policies for using new technologies to streamline or enhance city services or workflows. I would be honored to have the opportunity to put these skills, principles, and interests to work alongside other committed leaders to make a lasting positive impact on the city of Issaquah. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. And back to my list. Next up is Katya. Welcome, Katya.
Good evening, everyone, members of the City Council, members of the city staff, and Mayor Polly. My name is Katya Zakharov, and I am very grateful to be here tonight and to be considerate for the position on our City Council. I moved to Issaquah in 2020, in the midst of the pandemic, and as many of you, I was looking for ways to serve my community. That is why I took a chance and got elected for the Issaquah Highlands Community Association Board of Directors, where I served a full term of two years. In 2023, I was running for the position on our council. Through my campaign, I've met a lot of our residents, and I saw firsthand their hopes, their dreams, their fears, and their concerns about our city. Currently, I serve on the Planning Policy Commission and Commercial Space Standing Committee. These roles equip me well with knowledge of the situation necessary to be an active member of the City Council on day one if I am selected. A bit about myself: I am a first-generation immigrant who came to the United States a bit over 20 years ago, with dreams and a lot of determination. I have decades of experience living in urban communities in different parts of the world. This gives me a great understanding of the importance of wise city planning, community engagement, and creating spaces that foster connection and collaboration. I built a successful small business here in the Pacific Northwest from the ground up, and I work closely with our local children and their families every day, so I truly understand their concerns, hopes, dreams, and fears. My advanced education in economics and years of work experience have trained me to see the big picture and to quickly understand possible positive or negative outcomes of the situation, no matter how complex the issue might be, which is crucial for making sound decisions. I am seeking this position because I feel the responsibility to give back to the country and the community that has become my home and helped me realize my full potential. I will bring the perspective of a longtime small-business owner who faced all ups and downs of doing business on the Pacific Northwest for nearly two decades. I know firsthand how challenging it can be to find a suitable space for your business here, and that is why I was so eager to join the Commercial Properties Standing Committee. I want to make sure that our plans for Central Issaquah include not only affordable housing units, but also affordable commercial spaces, and not only high-end retail, but way more affordable mixed-use zoned developments. Our residents keep showing concerns about mobility, safety, and the impact of growth of our city. The upcoming light rail expansion is both exciting opportunity and a challenge. We must plan wisely to make sure it enhances the quality of our lives. The rapid growth of the population of our region, and subsequently, the growth of the population of our city, is inevitable. The affordability of housing has been an issue for over a decade now. The Planning Policy Commission has been working on middle housing and cohousing legislation to provide more options for a growing population. Cohousing and middle housing is actually something that I have a personal experience living in. I want to be a part of the City Council to make sure a good portion of these units will be available to our workforce: police officers, teachers, firefighters, and retail workers. It's essential that people that work in Issaquah can also live here. Many families choose Issaquah for two reasons: its proximity to two big cities, Bellevue and Seattle, as well as our green spaces, our parks, trails, creeks, and lakes. I truly believe in fostering responsible growth that balances the needs of our growing population with providing environmental stewardship. Traffic congestion is a major concern for many of our residents. I am committed to work with my fellow council members to find real solutions to improve traffic flow. This includes implementing intelligent traffic control systems that can adapt to real-time conditions, exploring measures like new roundabouts, four-way stops, and traffic calming techniques that make our roads safer and way more efficient. I will advocate for alternative transportation options. I will support public transportation, micro-mobility, and walking through thoughtful infrastructure improvements. These priorities reflect the work I have already started as a Planning Policy Commissioner, and I am dedicated to ensuring we effectively implement these measures. Public safety is another key issue that has come up in community discussions. I plan to work closely with our dedicated police officers to understand their needs and to make sure they have resources necessary to keep our community safe. I understand many of the issues we discuss will take time to resolve, years and sometimes maybe decades. I recognize that opinions may differ among council members and residents. I commit to thorough research, active listening, and engaging discussions, always baking my views with data and considering all possible outcomes. At the end of the day, I will stand by my decisions and take full responsibility for them. To support my application, I have included four letters of recommendation from the individuals and groups I cherish, including Maggie Soderstrom, President of the Ashford at Vista Park HOA, Sarah Hoy, the manager of Issaquah Highlands Community Association, former Issaquah Mayor Fred Butler, and the committee of my studio parents, teachers, and adult students. I am eager to continue serving Issaquah in a more impactful way, and I sincerely thank you for this opportunity. I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and start making decisions that will benefit our community on day one. Thank you.
Thank you, Katya. Next up, we have Kelly Chang. Welcome, Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor Polly, City Council members, and city staff for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Kelly Chang, and like many others in our community, I'm seeking the appointment to City Council. So a bit of background on me: I moved to Issaquah in late 2020 during the pandemic. In the pandemic, like many others, the trails of the Issaquah Alps became, you know, a solace for me, and moving to Talis really felt like the right move. Now I live, you know, less than half a mile away from the trails, which not only are neighborhood trails, but connect to an amazing ecosystem on Cougar Mountain. In 2021, you know, because I was so into the trails and wanted to give back, I joined the Issaquah Alps Trails Club. In 2024, I became president of Issaquah Alps Trails Club, and I also had the opportunity to serve on the Mayor's Strategic Plan Task Force, where my focus areas were growth and development and environmental sustainability. Professionally, I work for a clean energy consultancy called Bright Power, where I work with multifamily property owners and lenders ranging from the small, small community banks to some of the largest financial institutions in the country to finance decarbonization in multifamily and affordable housing. So going back a bit to when I first joined the Issaquah Alps Trails Club, you know, as a rite of passage, we all had to go bushwhacking with Mr. David Kaffler over here. And it was on those bushwhacks that I learned that actually the reason why Talis was so amazing in the way that it is, the reason why Issaquah Highlands is the way that it is, is actually due to thoughtful planning from the City Council of Issaquah 20 and 30 years ago. I would hope to continue that legacy of thoughtful planning on the Issaquah City Council, specifically focusing on growth and development, environmental sustainability, public safety, and traffic. So growth and development. In 2025, we have an amazing opportunity with the Central Issaquah Plan and with Light Rail coming to Issaquah in 2040 to really build a city that's truly inclusive for everyone. With the upcoming middle housing regulations, we have the opportunity to build housing that serves more people, that serves the workforce. I have a lot of friends through the running community who want to live in Issaquah, but they can't find housing that fits within their budget. I have friends who are single parents, whose kids are in the Issaquah School District, and they're looking around saying, you know, I don't know if I'm going to be able to continue afford living here. And with Central Issaquah, with the Central Issaquah Plan, we need to make sure that, you know, these people are going to be able to continue living in Issaquah and being part of our community. On environmental sustainability, Issaquah's been a leader. We've adopted the Issaquah Climate Action Plan. We've been a leader on, you know, land conservation for 50-plus years, and we were the first city in the state of Washington to become LEED Gold Certified. Given my background... Given my background in environmental sustainability, I would want to bring my expertise to make sure that Issaquah continues being a leader. The Issaquah Climate Action Plan is set for an update in 2025. I would want to help shape that and make sure that the city is actually thinking about what we can do that would be most impactful to drive climate action. Climate action isn't just something that should live within the Sustainability or the Parks Department. It takes a whole-of-government approach. So that means thinking about, you know, how land use affects climate. For example, if people are able to walk to where they need to go shop, then they can get out of their cars, and that reduces climate impact. It also makes it so that people can, you know, encounter people in the community, which makes for better quality of life. On public safety, this is an issue that's, you know, very important to a lot of voters in Issaquah and also to myself. A few years ago, on, you know, a beautiful Friday afternoon, I went for a run not too far from here, East Sunset Way Trailhead. I came back to my car and found my front window smashed. Even though nothing ultimately was taken, my sense of safety was shaken. And that's why I think it's so important to make sure that our police officers have the resources they need to fight property crime and especially organized retail crime. But I also recognize that our police officers aren't the best suited for every issue. And that's why I support, you know, providing mental health services and behavioral health specialists so that our police can also stay focused on fighting crime, which is what they do best. Traffic's another issue that people in Issaquah are very familiar with. Living in Talus, I am intimately familiar with rush-hour traffic on 900. And there's a lot of things that we can do to mitigate that. For example, building out bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure so that people can get around safely without needing to get in their cars. Additionally, like I mentioned earlier, making it so that people can, you know, go grocery shopping within their neighborhoods and not go on the arterial streets and create traffic jams. Also, a lot of the traffic in Issaquah is from people that neither live nor work here. And that's why I would want to work regionally to build transit solutions to serve people that live and work outside of Issaquah and currently are passing through our streets. Speaking of working regionally, with the Issaquah Alps Trails Club, I worked on conservation issues with elected officials and agency staff at the city, county, and state levels. On City Council, I would like to continue with that regional work with expanding my issue area focus to include things like affordable housing, growth and development, growth management, and transit. Lastly, and most importantly, as City Council's, as a City Council member of Issaquah, I would make it my mission to serve all constituents of Issaquah, not just those that are the most vocal and, you know, show up all the time. That means going to places where people, you know, are less engaged. I would hope to apply my professional experience to this. You know, working with affordable housing, a lot of those folks typically aren't the most engaged in the political process. So for example, one property that we worked with was, it's a Section 202 Affordable Senior Housing Community located in a formerly redlined area. And so the seniors that currently live there are mostly Japanese and Korean-speaking. And so when we had our resident engagement event with them after heat pumps were installed, we actually brought in two interpreters, one Korean, one Japanese, and we brought in culturally appropriate snacks from the Asian grocery store. Got great turnout. Probably helped that we had gift cards raffled off too, but we can't do that in Issaquah because of the gift of public funds doctrine. But you know, there's aspects of that that we could, you know, bring to, you know, entice people to come out and hear what residents have to say, even if they're not typically engaged. But ultimately, you know, Issaquah's where I call my home. It's where I want to raise my kids. It's where I want my kids to be able to grow up and live here when they grow up too. But I also want it to be a place where, you know, the people that serve our community, the nurses, teachers, firefighters, police officers, first responders can call home to. And I really think Issaquah, you know, we have a great foundation to build an affordable and inclusive city that honors both our natural beauty and our rich human history. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, Kelly. So Dave, you heard that. You're off the list. You have to leave the room. Dave Kapler is one of our many residents who is very, very familiar to council and a former council member. Thanks, Kelly. That's great.
I was also going to mention that when I learned early on that if David Kapler says hike, you can't wear shorts.
No.
Because there's very high chance that you're going to end up bushwhacking.
Oh, yeah. You're going to get cut up. There is no doubt. Jason, come on up.
Good evening, City Council, Madam President, staff. My name is Jason Voice, and along with everybody behind me, I am seeking the appointment for Position Six. A little bit of background. This spring, I will have served for seven years on the Planning Policy Commission, and I've been the chair for the past two and a half years. We've covered a lot of work in that time. But two big lifts were the Title 18 Land Use Code as well as the Comprehensive Plan Update. In addition, I've also served on multiple task forces, including the COVID Emergency Task Force, which gave me the opportunity to do inter-agency work, as well as the Financial Task Force, which provided council with recommendations to how to appropriate that money into the budget, and finally, last year's Strategic Plan Update. Now, moving on, I was trying to think, what does City Council need more of in their lives? How about another acronym? So this rhetorical device, I hope, is memorable, but ultimately, hope to give you guys a high-level view of a few things I think about our lovely city. It's real straightforward. It's DIP. And the D stands for development. And now, clearly, this is a wide swath of things we're talking about, everything from sound transit to infrastructure to housing. But this is the one we have to get right. Of all the things in the Strategic Plan, this is the one that future people in Issaquah will tangibly have that we leave behind. Obviously, the environment as well. But this is the one we're building, we're creating. So how we use that land effectively and efficiently is critical. True story, I came from a city that made some very bad decisions. They scarred their main street by basically selling it to the highest bidder. And you have a mix of planned housing along with tin buildings in what was a once 100-year-old city. Issaquah thankfully has made very few mistakes, but it's one that I'm probably the most passionate about. And it's not just aesthetics, it's everything. So development is key. Now integrity is the I, and this one Issaquah gets high points for. The culture of civility that we have in our city is unique. In fact, I believe one of you mentioned, we are a bit of a unicorn. We are the exception. We are not the rule. And my hope is to be a link in that chain. That's part of our heritage here in Issaquah. And it's important that we pass that along to future Issaquah leaders in the next 10 to 15 years. But that permeates everything. That's everything from our agencies to our fantastic staff, to our amazing police department, our utilities. Again, the way we treat one another, we're, there's really just no disrespect. And you can see 100 hours of me on the Planning Policy with my colleagues. And I know it's the same for you as well. The P is for protection and providing. And what I'm talking about here is our natural environment as well as our built environment. So all of the amenities that make Issaquah why all of us call it home. So this is our creeks, our peaks, our Alps, our lake, all of these. In addition to the hatchery, Old Town, and of course, our amazing Issaquah School District. All of these things need our support. All of them continue to need our attention. And every single survey that the city sees, these are the reasons people are willing to pay for those high mortgages and high rents. So again, we need to safeguard those and protect them. So that's DIP. I hope it stays with you guys in your executive session. And who knows, maybe for another week too. But I do want to shift gears real quickly with the time I have left. All of you are familiar with the who, what, when, where, why? I want to provide you with a why and a what. Why I'd like to serve on council and what I believe I could bring. So the why is I am a 20-year resident. I love my city. I was not brought here because of family connections or anything like that. It's a city I chose. And I truly do enjoy the work. As a Commissioner, we look at everything from chicken husbandry all the way to code language. So we see all of it. And I know you guys know this because a big part of what we do is provide you recommendations. So the Planning Policy has been just a great, it's given me the opportunity to give back to my community, and it's deeply rewarding. So I'm not as altruistic as I might appear. But I actually do get something in return. Now, as far as another reason is, again, I mentioned it, just the development aspect. Again, I kind of live between hope and trauma. Very hopeful for Issaquah. We've got a lot of amazing amenities, and we've got a lot of potential. But I have seen the bad decisions that other cities have made. And like I said, I'm very happy because Issaquah has made very few mistakes. The moratorium was appropriate. And this is coming from someone who works in the building industry. So the moratorium was correct for our residents. And then as far as what I think I would bring, I think a few things. The work on the Planning Policy, I believe, would be helpful. It's clear that, again, most of the work comes up, filters up to the council itself. But also, I've held public hearings. Up until two years ago, we used to quasi-judicial hearings. So I'm familiar with all of this type of work. I believe that'll help me hit the ground running. In addition, maturity. I've been now part of the city government as a Commissioner for seven years. I understand the limitations that council has. You guys do not possess magic wands or shovels that I'm aware of. But again, we can encourage, we can enable, but ultimately, we do not build ourselves. And having that maturity, I think, would be helpful. And then finally, my work with numbers. In my former life, I was an HOA president, so I'm quite used to general funds and reserve funds and expenditures and revenues. Now, clearly, the city is on a much different scale. But again, I believe it's applicable. Also, just being a small-town or a small-business owner here in Issaquah, I think, would be helpful because, again, we've had good times, we've had bad times. I understand what those difficult decisions are to let go of people you've trained and cared about for many years. But unfortunately, as Issaquah continues to move and towards a deficit budget cycle, I think that could be of use. Again, I want to thank all of you for your time and your consideration. Regardless of the outcome, I do look forward to continuing to help and serve my city in whatever capacity I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. DIP. Oh, just at the buzzer. Okay. Mark, why don't you come on up next?
I guess I lost count there. Good evening, everyone. I'm Mark Lazara, Creekside Apartments, right across the street here. Mayor, council, and everyone joining us virtually as well as physically here in the room. I'm applying for the position of City Council because I believe in community, our potential, and our ability to build a stronger, more vibrant future together. This is a rare opportunity to fill an elected seat without an election. It is not unprecedented. Gerald Ford was president. He was never elected president or vice president. I wanted to take this moment to thank you all for hearing our petitions to apply for this position. As we all are applying, there are 12 of us on the list. One will be chosen, so it feels like reality TV. Welcome to Issaquah. A lot of the things that I have marked down and written here have been covered by my fellow applicants earlier. I don't feel a need to rehash a lot of those things. We all want economic growth, infrastructure, public safety, transparency, and accountability. However, I'm not going to come to you with these answers. I think that would be very arrogant of me. I would look to your knowledge and your experience to guide my decision-making and whatever it is that we come to agree or disagree upon. I believe disagreements are an opportunity for dialogue. I've seen it happen in these meetings as I've been coming to meetings. Just the simple banter back and forth of changing an acronym of MIPS to MAPS happens just like that. I want to be a part of that process. I think it's fantastic. It's fascinating. As I have been coming to these meetings, I'm getting a better perspective of the interworkings of the government, both locally as well as regionally, both on the elected, the appointed, and the volunteer level. One thing you are right about, Madam Mayor, is this isn't, this is an interview. We are interviewing for this position. And I'm hoping that, you know, in the previous weeks that I've shown a commitment, that I've been here. You know, it's been said that the greatest ability of any teammate is availability. You've all been here. You've seen me here. I'm putting in the work. This is my focus. Yeah, a lot of this is rehashing. I just... I'm ready to work. That's what I've been preaching since I ran an election a year and a half ago. That's what I'm trying to do. I'm giving my commitment, my all, my military history, my military background. Anyone familiar with the CBs? We have a can-do attitude. It is that commitment to service that brings me here tonight to speak to all of you. I'm going to cut it short and just say that I am ready to work starting immediately. Thank you.
Mark, thank you very much. And our last applicant this evening, Russ Coyle. Come on up, Russ.
Good evening. I know we're not at church, but usually when the man in the pulpit says, "Good evening,"
Oh, good evening.
"Good evening" comes back. After listening to council tonight, Side Matters Great and Small, and after listening to 11 terrific presentations with so much wonderful experience in the community, at this late hour, I would be foolish to insist on talking for five more minutes. So let me be foolish. My name is Russ Coyle. I teach university history courses. I write political and policy histories. And I volunteer in Issaquah for the Friends of the Issaquah Library as the treasurer and as Issaquah's special representative to the King County Landmarks Commission. I am, however, at heart, a storyteller. And the stories I tell are built on a foundation of two essential and transferable skills: listening and asking questions. Strangely for a storyteller perhaps, neither of these skills is talking. But listening requires adaptability. Most dead people, that's what I studied in my line of work. Most dead people, after all, leave little to no record of their lives. So how do we help them speak? To tell one person's story, we might explore the construction of a mid-19th-century hotel built by a female actress who managed to build in 1853 one of the most expensive hotels in the world at the time. How do we tell her story when she didn't leave too many records of her words? We have to look at a building to speak to us. To tell another story, we might examine 2,000-year-old mounds of dirt carefully constructed by Native Americans in the Ohio and Mississippi Valleys, carefully crafted to provide an astronomical lab capable of tracking the moon's path across the horizon. A mound of dirt that is a piece of technology that works as well today as it did 2,000 years ago. My watch won't make it through the year, I bet. Now, in the same way, where am I going with this? Well, our Issaquah neighbors use different means to talk to the community. How do our neighbors speak? In a multitude of ways, of course. And that requires adapting. That requires being creative, finding ways of listening, whether that's doorbelling, whether that's analyzing the community survey, whether it's informal or spontaneous chats out and about in the community or even here in the formality of council chambers. My experience, my professional experience, has taught me to listen and to ask questions and only, only at the last moment, to talk. As a council member, I will employ those two skills right away. As a council member, I will employ those two skills right away: listening and asking. And if appointed, I would appreciate the opportunity to run in November. In other communities where I have lived, I have campaigned at state and local level for other elected officials. I've walked door to door. That was our main method of communication. I know the sweat, the tired feet, and the long days. And if elected, I would, small step by small step, attempt to address Issaquah's mobility issues. If I had to imagine how, at the end of my council tenure, I might reflect on my service, I hope I can say that I built off the work of the people who served before me, that I cooperated with other towns and cities experiencing the same issues as Issaquah, and most crucially, that I left a solid foundation of work for someone to carry on after me. And I would be proud if, at the end of my tenure with the city council, I could say that I listened, that I asked, and that we solved more than I talked. I believe I am uniquely positioned to contribute to Issaquah's vision, leveraging our community's past to build a sustainable and welcoming future. Now, I'd like to close with some time remaining. I literally wrote on my little paper here, "Wait for applause." And so, on behalf of all the applicants tonight, let me offer one more sincere and heartfelt thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Russ. It has been fantastic to hear from 12 candidates for the city council position, and I want to thank you for taking the time to do this and your interest in serving on your city council. There are three council members who've gone through this process. And did you make it through the process, Councilmember Hall? Did you make it through the process, Council President?
I did.
On the first time?
Um, I think the second time.
Yeah, it was the second time, yeah.
And the mayor never made it through. I failed twice. So I just want you to know that if you do not get selected tonight, please do not be discouraged. There are many of us up here that have not gotten selected and still found an opportunity at a future election or a future vacancy to throw our hat in the ring again. So this is not an uncommon practice for our community. I know just by listening to you all that we'll get someone who's going to be very hardworking, but there's a lot of humor in the room, too. And I have to tell you, when we're doing policy work, we do appreciate being able to laugh once in a while. So now, the council will move into executive session. Typically, we ask the room to be cleared, and we do the executive session here, but this evening, we are going to leave you here and go to another meeting room for 30 minutes. Would you guys, do you guys want to start with 20 minutes and just add if we need, or do you want the 30? Okay, nope, they want the 30. And the way that would work is that after 30 minutes, if the council has not completed their work, the city clerk will come down and announce that an extension has been made, 10 minutes, 15 minutes, another 30 minutes. So you are more than welcome to stay here, but you do not need to. So the city council will come back here tonight and make an announcement, but the clerk can notify you by email if, as the city council narrows the applicants. So please stay, and if you cannot stay, do not worry about it. You'll be notified by email. And with that, should we be moving into the session? We'll take a break. So I think what we're going to do is, before I announce the executive session, we will first start with a five-minute break, and then the executive session will start upstairs. Okay. So ID 1826 is the executive session, and this is where the council will review the qualifications of appointment per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NH. It's an executive session to discuss qualifications, and the item is expected to take approximately 30 minutes. Action is anticipated to follow in open session down here afterwards. These executive sessions are closed to the public, and we will now, we will be going into executive session at 9:05 after a short five-minute break for the council. And that's it. And we can turn the camera off.
Chance, if you could put us back in open session?
Thank you. So we are back in open session at 9:52 PM. And I'd sort of like to explain a little bit about the process before we start it, so everybody is aware of what is coming. Now, the council, after having discussed the qualifications of the candidates, will open a nomination process in which they will be able to nominate individuals to move forward to a final -- sorry, a smaller group of candidates that will go to a second stage in this process. They don't have a limit. They could nominate two or all of you. It's up to the council at this moment to decide how to build this slate out. So I'll go through a series of questions with them. I'll give them an opportunity to nominate, and then they will take a vote on the slate, which will move all those on the slate forward to the next stage. And I will explain what that is after we have finished with the nominations. So is there a council member who would like to nominate one or more applicants to move forward in the appointment process? Council President Martz, then Ray.
I would like to nominate Kelly Jiang.
Councilmember Martz. Oh, Councilmember Ray.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Katia Zakharoff.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Deputy Council President?
I will nominate Mary Newcomer-Williams.
Are there any other nominations? And again, you can do more than one. Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Eric Olner.
We have four. Are there any other nominations? Councilmember Hall.
Thanks, and then I'll nominate Tina Hayes.
Deputy Council President?
I will nominate Chris Richly.
Are there any other nominations? Deputy Council President?
I will nominate Jeff Newell.
Looking for indications of any other nominations. Hearing none. The nominations are closed. Are there any discussions on the nominees listed? Council President?
Thank you. Before we go into a vote, I want to take a moment, as someone who's been through this process, to thank everyone for coming. This was a very difficult group to narrow down. We, as I said in our How to Become an Elected Official 101, we would be worse off as a city if the 11 people who do not make it through this process were to not continue to be involved. And so I really, really would love anyone who is interested to reach out individually so that we can have conversations. There will be other seats on council. I can also speak to my experience on PPC and boards and commissions, which are a wonderful way to get involved. So I really just want to continue to encourage that for the benefit of everyone in the city.
Thank you. Any other discussion nominees? Councilmember Martz?
I'd like to just add on that. I'm lucky enough that this is actually my seventh appointment that I've been part of. The six previous having appointed Stacey Goodman, Joe Forkner, Nina Milligan, Mariah Bateese, Victoria Hunt, and Lindsay Walsh to the City Council. In 2011, Joe Forkner, Nina Milligan, Mary Lou Polly, and Paul Winterstein were not appointed to the City Council. In 2013, Mary Lou Polly was again not appointed to the City Council, as well as Bill Ramos. In 2014, Bill Ramos was again not appointed to the City Council. In 2016, Justin Walsh was not appointed to the council. In 2018, we actually had 14 applicants, and amongst them Lindsay Walsh and Zach Hall were not appointed to the City Council. 2019, we didn't have anything quite like that, but we did have three hung ballots in executive session. So it became a very -- became very challenging. So I just want to reiterate that for 11 of the 12 folks, it's not going to be an appointment this time, but I'm hoping that list fills you with some enthusiasm that this is just one step in your ongoing relationship with the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz, for pointing out that I didn't get it twice. Nice job. Nice job. Okay. Anyway, any other comments on the nominees? Thank you for that. This is also interesting that you have never moved seven individuals forward before for a second discussion. So if there's no further discussion, I'd like to propose that the council take one vote on moving all those nominated forward in the appointment process. If there is an objection, we can vote on them individually. Is there any objection to voting on the nominees as a group? Not seeing any. Hearing none. The council will then vote on the nominees as one group. All those in favor of moving Kelly Jiang, Katia Zakharoff, Mary Newcomer-Williams, Eric Olner, Tina Hayes, Chris Rich -- ah, it's getting late. Chris Richly and Jeff Newell. Sorry. Forward in the appointment process -- finding my place on the script. Forward in the appointment process signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Those opposed? That carries unanimously, six and oh. By a vote of six and oh, the following individuals will move forward. I'll just repeat the names again. Kelly Jiang, Katia Zakharoff, Mary Newcomer-Williams, Eric Olner, Tina Hayes, Chris Richly, and Jeff Newell. Congratulations. I want to thank everybody who presented tonight. We know this is difficult. We appreciate your willingness to step up and to serve your community. So the City Council will now plan to have an additional question discussion opportunity on camera with those that are moving forward. This will occur on Monday, February 10th, at the Special City Council meeting, which will begin at 6:30 PM here in the City Council chambers. After this session -- after that session, the council will then repeat going into executive session to discuss qualifications and may come out with a single recommendation, and that person would be sworn in that night. They may also come out with a narrower field of two to three people that they would still like to move forward into a third phase. So it could be on February 10th, or we'll have an alternate date set up if there's going to be a third step in this process. City Council, since this is new to us, moving this many folks forward, do you want to talk a little bit about it as a group in front of the nominees as to what you're hoping the next session might look like or feel like? Any thoughts or suggestions on it? I know we're not -- you are not planning on asking them to do a new questionnaire. You are not planning them to do a new essay. So -- Council President?
Yeah, so what I would say is, one, feel free to reach out to us individually. You cannot meet with us as a group. We cannot meet with each other as a group. But we would like to hear from you and may be able to find time for up to seven people in the next week. You'll have to bear with us. We all also have jobs and other things going on. But we would like to hear from you. We -- council leadership is going to be coming up with a sense of questions. I'm not sure if we will publish all of those and send out. We may have a list of questions that get sent out that will be asked at that meeting. It may be more of a, you know, just get hit with some fresh questions. I'm not sure we anticipated coming out of this with seven people. So we may have to think through what this next meeting is going to look like. But we just really appreciate engagement. And I guess the other thing I would say is to the wider community, this is a really difficult choice. We would love to hear from you. You can email all six of us by emailing citycouncil@isiquawwa.gov. That's isiquawa.gov. We would love to hear from the community. We would also love to have anyone who wants to come to the meeting on the 10th and speak to the qualifications of these individuals, since ultimately you may be voting on them. That would be wonderful.
Thank you, Council President. And I just want to check one other thing. So tonight, we had them coming up one-on-one. I'm assuming for your next session, you'll have seven seated, and you'll be asking questions and potentially follow-up questions. So it's a little more interview style than what you've done. Okay, great. Just so that they understand. Any other thoughts or suggestions about the next process moving forward? Councilmember Hall.
Yeah, no, without getting into specifics or -- well, actually, hold on a second. Just, I would love it if we had an 18-person council and we could have all of you on council with us. Things might go a little slower. We have incredibly gifted people, an incredibly gifted bench of people ready to step up and serve here in Issaquah. So I'm really -- I'm happy about that. In terms of process, I think what you two have described makes sense to me. And then we can have a question of whether or not it's questions that happened there or in advance, but in terms of being able to ask the questions to people sat down at a table makes sense to me. Couple thoughts on that. One, maybe having questions that are more tailored towards some of the policy issues that we anticipate coming up this calendar year or maybe this biennium or something, some of kind of the meatier things. And then also would like to make sure that each -- well, actually, maybe this is a question for the rest of the council. I was thinking it would make sense that each candidate is asked the same question and candidates aren't asked different questions just for sense of being able to actually measure how people feel differently about particular issues. But was there anyone that felt differently? Like, maybe we should be able to ask different questions to diff -- because also, I don't know, we can't ask everything under the sun.
Deputy Council President? Great questions, Councilmember Hall.
Yeah, I think those are great questions. And just to follow up, I'm hoping that the council can get out from behind this dais and we can have maybe a roundtable and not have us up here and them down there. A suggestion, at least, that we do that. And then I'm wondering if we can -- I like the idea of asking, you know, everybody the same questions, and then I wonder if we could -- I wonder if we could kind of blend that with some individual questions or follow-ups and make it more of a dialogue or a discussion rather than a sort of a grilling. So, yeah, so I'm thinking maybe we can start off with a couple of standard questions and then maybe open it up for just dialoguing. That would be a thought.
I like that, too.
Okay.
Councilmember Ray.
I'm going to riff on the deputy council president. And I think this is a horrible setting for this next step. I was actually thinking similar lines, and I was wondering if we can move to Tibbetts Manor. Because it's a more -- it's a better venue.
You got a maybe on that. So there's probably some logistics that we'd have to check out. But what I'm hearing is not on the dais.
Yeah, so whatever it is, some -- something that's not quite this. Yeah, and Tibbetts was just what came to my mind, because we've done meetings there. Something to think about.
And when we were at Committee of the Hall versus council committees, we were able to do a rectangle here. So we'll work out. There may be already another group there that night. Okay, well, we'll work with council leadership. But we can, I think, make this room work.
Thank you. I like that. Good reinforcement. Any other thoughts about what you might want to be letting folks know the process might look like, or do you think we pretty much covered it? All good? Well, thanks. Look forward to working with council leadership on what this next piece looks like and looking forward to next Monday. Well, thank you all. We still have some work to do. You are more than welcome to stay for the last 10 minutes of the meeting, but you do not have to. Council President?
I thought we discussed skipping committee and regional reports and such.
Did we, Ray? Wally, are we also skipping the reports? No. Committee regional reports, mayor's report. What's that?
Oh. I can speak to that real quickly.
Sure. Yeah, there will be a special city council meeting on Monday, February 10th to make an appoint -- to possibly make an appointment to council position number six. There's no committee of the hall meeting this month. Due to President's Day and the Issaquah School District midwinter break, there are no council or committee meetings scheduled for the week of February 17th. The next regular city council meeting is Monday, February 24th. Anticipated items include the Mobility Action Plan update, the 2024 Arch Housing Trust Fund informational update, 2024 Economic Development Annual Report. And Council President, did you also want to add something?
Yes. So at the beginning of the year, we usually appoint council members to some of our regional seats as well as our committees and chairs. We've decided to delay the committee and chair changes until after we get the new member. So everyone will continue on their seats in the meantime. But we do have just a few regional seat appointments, which is mostly just continuing what we've done. Councilmember Joe on CWA, the Cascade Water Alliance, Eastside Fire and Rescue, members for Hall and Martz, and myself as an alternate. Eastside Transportation Partnership, Council -- Deputy Council President De Michele, Councilmember Joe as Chamber of Commerce and LTAC, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Councilmember Hall for the Kokonye Work Group and Wyra 8, which is our watershed. And then HIC, the Public Issues Committee, Councilmember Martz. We do have a few opportunities for the new council member to serve as an alternate in some of these areas so that they can learn the ropes. But we would make that assignment based on their availability and interest after an appointment is made.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. I think I mentioned the Garage is having their environmental session on Wednesday, the 12th, at 6:00 PM. This is a very entertaining and insightful session. Last year, the students were basically haranguing on us adults for leaving the world in tatters. And I think that we need to hear what they have to say and make sure that we are working every way that we can to make sure we leave the world better than we found it. Thank you.
Any other items? Okay, I do have one. Give me one second to pull it up. This was part of the mayor's report that I actually wanted to make sure was said this week. Going to have to find this one, Lindsay. Bear with me. Oh, do you have it up? Great. Okay. Just pull it up for a second. Too many computers here. Okay. So there are some other items that we'll report out just through email. But I did want to talk about a recent increase that we have had in Issaquah in graffiti around our city that displayed anti-Semitic and hateful messages. I want to make it clear that this type of behavior will not be tolerated here in Issaquah. The Issaquah Police Department is actively investigating these incidents. And if you see any kind of graffiti or hateful messages anywhere in Issaquah, please report it immediately to the Issaquah Police Department. Issaquah is a welcoming and inclusive city, and we are proud of our diverse community that makes Issaquah so special. Together, we will let it be known that Issaquah will not tolerate hate or discrimination in our city. So I did not want to leave that out tonight, because this is really recent news here in town. Thank you, Council President. Any other good-of-the-order items? All right, we are adjourned at 10:10.